A regular meeting of the Township of Washington in accordance with the requirements of the Jersey statutes regarding open public meetings notices this meeting was legally advertised in a carrier post in the South Jersey Times as well as posted on the bulletin board in the missile building. Fire exits are located through the double doors to your left and right. Please silence all mobile devices. This meeting is being taped. If anyone does not wish to be seen on television, may be excused. This will be shown on Channel 9 every week, Sunday at 9:00 p.m., Wednesday at 7:00 p.m., Friday at 10:00 p.m., Saturday at 10:00 p.m., and will continue until the next meeting. This meeting is also being livestreamed on YouTube. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let the Pledge of Allegiance reflect on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, infinite and just as strong.
Before we begin, I'd like to do a moment of silence tomorrow being 9/11. Thank you. If anyone will please stand, we're going to have our national anthem sung by Officer Paglioni.
(singing) By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed as the twilight's mast, whose cross-street bright stars through the perilous sky; o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the
Thank you, Officer. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vice President Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Harris?
Here.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Here.
Councilman Yerkes?
Present.
Council President Deverell?
Here.
Mayor DellaPia?
Here.
Ms. Backage?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Present.
Moving on to presentations, Chief.
Thank you all for being here this evening to celebrate a very special and joyous occasion for our police department and for our Washington Township community. Tonight, we proudly recognize the well-deserved promotions of three outstanding officers: Leo Di Pietro to Captain, Joe Rosen to Lieutenant, and Matthew Lautenstager to Sergeant. These men have demonstrated remarkable dedication, professionalism, and leadership throughout their careers. Their hard work and commitment to the mission of the Washington Township Police make them among the very best in their field. But I also want to take a moment to recognize and thank their families. Behind every promotion stands the quiet strength of loved ones who sacrificed so much: holidays when these officers were on duty protecting our town, weekends and midnights spent apart, and the patience and understanding when duty called. Families also give officers the time and support to study and prepare and test for these promotions. Without that commitment at home, their success here tonight would not be possible. Thank you to our mayor and council for approving these promotions tonight. On behalf of the Township and our entire police department, I extend our heartfelt congratulations to Captain Di Pietro, Lieutenant Rousen, and Sergeant Lautenstager. And a very special thank you to the families for the sacrifices that make these achievements possible. At this point, I'll turn the floor over to Mayor DellaPia for the promotional process. I choose a person. You solemnly swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I will impartially and justly protect all the duties of a lieutenant of the Washington Township of the State of New Jersey, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people.
Congratulations.
Are you good? I, Leo Di Pietro, solemnly swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people. So help me God. I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I will impartially and justly protect all the duties of a captain of the Washington Township of the State of New Jersey, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people. So help me God. Can Leo's family come up, please?
You stick something to the stairs, you step behind it. One more.
Let's give all these officers a moment of round of applause, and thank you to all their families as well. Two-minute recess? We're going to take a two-minute recess. Give the whole room. Moving on with our agenda tonight. Next, we have a proclamation in honor of the library card signup month, so if the library staff could please come up. Councilman Brown?
I don't want to say staff, I'll say team. I didn't mean staff, I meant team. I think they're a good team. Whoa, it's a giant library card.
Jenna's, Jenna, her parents are right there, her daughter Drew gets to the thing.
That's awesome. We got to laminate it.
Yeah, they can come over here. Township of Washington proclamation in recognition of Library Card Signup Month. Where libraries play a crucial role in the education and development of children from storytime for preschoolers to college and career planning for high schoolers, fostering literacy and a love for reading. Whereas libraries are welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another across cultural, ethnic, generational, and economic lines, strengthening the social fabric of the communities they serve. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Where libraries help people of all ages navigate the complexities of life, providing access to research, information, and government services that allow everyone to lead more productive and fulfilling lives. Whereas libraries contribute to a strong local economy by providing access to technology and training that are critical to the success of job seekers, entrepreneurs, and students. Whereas in a time of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually. Whereas the shared resources of libraries offer reduced the number of items household buys and dispose of, providing an effortless way to save money, conserve resources, and reduce waste. Whereas a library card sparks creativity and empowers all people to explore new passions and interests and pursue a path of lifelong learning. Whereas libraries are the cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Mayor and the Council of the Township of Washington proclaim September Library Card Signup Month in the Township of Washington and encourage everybody to sign up for their own library card today, on this 10th day of September
I just wanted to mention that we are raffling eight tickets to the Phillies, and four will go to a new cardholder and four to an existing cardholder. You just need to come out and fill out the slip and put it in our raffle box.
Who are you?
I'm sorry. Do the same.
Oh, yeah. It's handler.
I don't know if two people.
There he is. I wouldn't know if it's a big audience.
All right. Hi, folks, I'm Rich Nardello, and I'm here because September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Just like in October Breast Cancer Month, we go pink, well, in September, we go gold. And you can see some of the folks wearing the gold ribbons. And tonight, I requested that our mayor and town council honor a young boy from Heritage Valley, his name is Gavin Todd. And where the heck is he? Was he not here? Well, I can tell you where he is. He is at back-to-school night at Hurfield, and after that, he's at hockey practice. So, I'm going to try to sneak this proclamation in somewhere in Hollidale to give to him, but because of all the fine work, of all the help from PD and fire department, I mean, we did a parade for Gavin Todd back in January, right, and I think when the mayor was sworn in the next day, it was 12 degrees, and first responders showed up big time and made this little boy's day very special. So, it's about making the little boy special, and you can see my cool poster, I don't want to get, you know, beat out by the library here, too. What folks should just be aware of, just a couple of facts: childhood cancer is now 1 in 257. I made this poster like four years ago. I keep on scratching out the number, it goes from 300 to 257. Excuse me. Forty-five kids a day are diagnosed with childhood cancer. I could come up here and list the names, just in Washington Township, that I've been doing what I do for children. They're in every school, they're in Bell's, they're in Hurfield, they're in high school, et cetera, too. So I just want folks to be aware. And I really wanted someone with a lot of really good community standing to be here. So I chose a good friend of mine, Captain Adam Secheck, to actually accept the proclamation from the, from council and mayor, and then we'll take, and I'll take it from there and bring it over to his location. So, thank you so much, and you can please read the proclamation and go from there. Councilman.
Township of Washington proclamation in recognition of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the United States, and the Township of Washington has proclaimed the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas, please join childhood cancer advocate Rich Nardello as we go gold during the month, showing support for continued research to find a cure for childhood cancers and spread awareness. And whereas each year, nearly 16,000 children from birth to age 19 will be diagnosed with cancer in the United States, which is 1 in 285 children. And whereas there are approximately 40,000 children actively receiving treatment at any given time, and whereas New Jersey Senate Joint Resolution Number 49 unanimously passed in 2016 designated, designating September Go Gold for Children Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to increase public knowledge and awareness surrounding childhood cancers. And whereas guided by this resolution, municipalities can designate ambassadors by way of proclamation. And whereas Gavin Todd is in first grade at Hurfield Elementary School and loves hockey, hanging out with friends. hanging out with friends, chicken and ranch dressing, and watching Minecraft movies. God bless him. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of Washington Township, County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey hereby recognizes Gavin Todd as the Childhood Cancer Awareness Ambassador of 2025. Gavin's not here, but give him a big round of applause.
Thank you, everybody. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list for September 10, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBarella?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for August 13, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yurkis?
Stand.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBarella?
Yes. Madam Clerk, would you please read our ordinances?
This ordinance is up for adoption after public hearing, ordinance 162025. Ordinance up the Township of Washington, County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 179 entitled Property Maintenance and Housing Standards.
Can I get a motion to open to the public on ordinance 1625?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak about ordinance 1625? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close, please?
Close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adopt ordinance 16-2025?
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBarella?
Yes. Are we going?
This ordinance 17, this ordinance is up for adoption after public hearing, ordinance amending Chapter 246 of the Code of the Township of Washington entitled Towing.
Can I get a motion to open to the public on ordinance 17-2025?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone who wants to speak? Just come to the podium and just give us your name and your address, please.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Paul Ergang, I live at 744 Herfle Crosskey's Road. And just a little background, I've been telling for this town for over 30 years, give them, you know, everything I got and everything. And they threw some changes in there that are...
Sir.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And so they threw a few changes in there that I thought were like a little crazy. So the time response, dropping them from 15, you know, it was 20 minutes and they dropped it to 15 minutes. I was sitting in my driveway in the truck yesterday about 1:30, not even rush hour time, and I went to Berlin Crosskey's in the Pike and it took me almost 17. And that's not even being in the shop, getting the phone call, writing it down. So, you know, that's, you know, like there's, it's just a safety issue, you know, because you still got, I don't have lights and sirens, so we're just Biden speed limit, stopping at stop signs, and if the school's letting out, you got to stop for, you know, them, and all that kind of stuff. And then the next thing was the fee. So prior to 2022, the fee for the application was only $100. So in 2022, they raised it to 500. So now, only a few years later, they're trying to raise it to 1,000. So where does it go from there? You know, that's just, you know, it's only a few years. And there's this doubling, where we're at the same rate for probably almost 15 years now. So it's just, you know, everybody else is, gets their increases, but we do not. Hopefully that will change. And then the license, you know, maybe they want to be more on top of it, so they changed it from three years to two. So they did that also. But the hours of operation, that's a little crazy. They're trying to say that they want you open from 8:00 AM to 6:00. So if you look at this facility, it's only open from 8:30 to 4:30. So, you know, that's 10 hours just on five days a week, you know, 10 hours a day, that's 50 hours. And then they want you open Saturday and Sunday. I mean, that's seven days a week, that's crazy. The old ordinance, they never stated a time, it just said they wanted you open during normal business hours and from 9:00 to 12:00 on Saturday. So to throw a full other day in there, I mean, you're asking people to sit at the storage yard for 70 some hours a week, that's just, I mean, that's crazy, like, you know? And so you would have to pay somebody like 30 hours overtime a week, you know, just because they're changing all this stuff. And that's about it. But, you know, there were major things because, you know, the response time, like you still have to buy by all the traffic laws and everything, and the amount of traffic in 30 years in this town, there's probably at least 15 more traffic lights since I came to this town, you know? And now they're putting another one in, Selina Road. So now for me, just to get the five points, now I have to go through three lights, you know what I mean? You know, because county house was never there before or anything. So you can't drop our time and expect us to be safe and buy by all the laws and then just keep putting roadblocks in our way all the time with all traffic lights and everything. That's all, I was just saying, I mean, that's a major safety issue, you know, in my opinion, you know? And that's about all.
Paul, thank you so much. This is all good information?
Yeah, I'm a little late, I didn't know that it was the second reading, I'm sorry for that. But I never even knew this would, it took effect, I know that the application is due. So I go online and I wanted to print it out, and then I seen this, and then startled me, and that's why I'm here today. Or I would have never even have known anything about this. So I, you know, I, I don't know. But it's not like I'm new and I just started, you know, I, you know. You know, I started telling with Chief Moore was chief, so I've been around a really long time, you know, so it's not like I just, you know. And so for all that time, it was 20 minutes.
Right.
So now all of a sudden it's 15, that, you know, it's just, I don't want to see me or my son or anybody put themselves in arms' way, you know, trying to get out there, you know, because you're afraid you're going to get punished. But for all this time, it, you know, if somebody went over to 20 minutes, you know, they never got punished or anything, that's the problem, you know? I mean, the 20 minutes is a good time, but if somebody is over that, they just let it fly, you know what I'm saying? And it also goes by when the tow was called, you know? So if there is a motor vehicle crash, like the fire company shows up, the ambulance, they'll wait till everybody's almost ready to leave and then they'll call the tow. Well, if they called the tow 10 more minutes earlier, you know, everybody, you would be there in adequate time, you know what I mean? Like, you know, so if you're waiting till everybody leaves and then the cop's sitting on the side of the road for another 20 minutes, you know, he might get aggravated. But if he would have called them earlier, he would be loading up and leaving the same time as everybody else. You know, that has a lot to do with it all, so. All ready?
Paul, thank you so much for that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So, I want to have more conversations with Paul about some of this stuff. Should we pass this tonight and then have those conversations, go back and fix those things?
So Mr. Council President, your options are to pass it as is, and then of course, as with any law that's on our books here in the township, you can always continue to interface with the community and make additional changes. You could also vote to table it at this time, and then consider whether you want to do amendments or possibly introduce a revised ordinance in the future. You have a couple different options. My only comment would be, I think the current licensing period, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, is up at the end of the year. So if you want to consider changes for the, for the current cycle, there is a little bit of a timeframe to consider. But those are your options tonight, assuming you don't want to, assuming council decides not to vote it down.
Go ahead, council.
I would also include the special chief. So I know myself, try to leave town.
So, yeah, so I guess we want to kind of get it done before the end of the year. Paul, so let's, let's do this, let's, let's table it, right? Let's have a conversation, if you can give your information to Barb, let's have a conversation with you, and obviously we'll have a conversation with the chief as well, and that way we can kind of see where some of these things, why these things changed, get some of those answers for you and for ourselves, right? And that way we kind of get all on the same page. All right? But yeah, so Barb's right over there, so before we leave, you can give her that information. All right, so everybody would like to table this, is that what I'm hearing?
Motion to table it.
All right.
Second motion?
No motion.
I did.
Roll call.
Councilman Yurkis?
I vote yes to table it.
Councilman Harris?
Yes to table.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes to table.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes to table.
Council President DeBarella?
Yes to table. Madam Clerk, ordinance?
Ordinance 18, this ordinance is up for introduction only, ordinance amending Chapter 254 of the Code of the Township of Washington entitled Trees.
Can I get a motion to introduce ordinance 0018-25?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBarella?
Yes. Public hearing for this adoption will occur on September 24th. Next ordinance, please.
Ordinance 19, this ordinance is for introduction only, ordinance amending Chapter 47 of the Code of the Township of Washington entitled Charries.
Can I get a motion to introduce ordinance 0019-25?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBarella?
Yes. Public hearing and adoption will occur on September 24th. Moving on to resolutions, defiling resolution or consent agenda only, and only require vote for all listed. Each one must be read by title. If any member of the council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to indicate prior to reading the titles. Does anyone have anything removed or read separately? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please. Okay, I'm sorry. So R231-2025 will be tabled, correct?
231.
231 will be tabled. Okay. So, all right, can I get a motion to table R231?
Motion to table.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBarella?
Yes. Madam Clerk, will you read the other resolution, please?
Resolution 228, resolution appointing a member to the Washington Township Municipal Utilities Authority. 229, resolution authorizing the appointment of a deputy tax collector in the Township of Washington. 230, resolution authorizing Washington Township to submit a strategic plan for the municipal alliance grant for cycle July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. Resolution 232, resolution authorizing the Township of Washington to enter into a cooperative pricing agreement with Somerset County Cooperative Pricing System. 223, resolution authorizing the cancellation of stale dated bank reconciliation items of the Township of Washington trust account. 234, resolution requesting approval of revenue and appropriations from the Department of Community Affairs for the opioid settlement grant in the amount of $106,805.32. 235, resolution requesting approval of revenue and appropriations from the state of New Jersey for the FY 2024 Community Development Grant Phase III of the White Birch Road Improvement in the amount of $129,634. 236, resolution accepting guarantees and engineering inspection escrow from Scafisi Inc. for 110 Gantion Road, Lot 150.77, Lot 1.01. 237, resolution accepting guarantees and engineering inspection escrow for Progood Sewell LLC for sprouts located at Egg Harbor and Hurfield Grand Lock Road, Sewell, New Jersey, Lot 199, Lots 12. Resolution 238, resolution authorizing a change order and accepting a maintenance guarantee from South State Inc. for the 2023 Road Program Phase II project. 239, resolution authorizing a change order and accepting a maintenance guarantee from Capella Construction Inc. for the Alden Road Outfall Improvements Project. 240, resolution authorizing refunds of tax over payments. 241, resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran at 216 Hillary Lane effective July 22, 2025. 242, resolution, resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran at 6 Grove Street effective July 24, 2025. 243, resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, 10 Packer Court, effective 20, July 26, 2025. 244, resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, 22 South Mars Drive, effective July 28, 2025. 245, resolution authorizing the execution of Treatment Works approval application for Turnersville Equities LLC.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve R228-25 to R230-2025 and R232-25 to R245-2025?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yurkis?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBarella?
Yes. Moving on to all business, new business, and reports, we'll start with Councilman Harris.
Yes, thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our new Captain DePietro, Lieutenant Ralston, and Sergeant Laudenslager, which we witnessed today, that was a really nice event. Want to mention Friday, I was able to acknowledge my friends Luke Stanch from Stanch Property Services and Joe Bernie from Greenwith Envy, they used their talents and their time to beautify the entrance of Washington Township High School, they pressure washed and redid the front, and they did that pro bono, kindness of the heart, just to give back. So that was, that was a really nice thing to, to go to and experience. Saturday, this past Saturday was the Veterans Cup for Pee Wee Football. So myself, Council President Peter DeBarella was there, we got to meet a 99-year-old vet, fought in World War II and the Korean War. He was amazing. And in his story, they also told how he was injured and was offered the Purple Heart and declined because he didn't feel his injuries were severe enough. Crazy stuff, but crazy, crazy good. So that was some heartwarming, heartwarming event, so God bless him and God bless Charlie Kirk and his wife and his children, and God bless America. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Pascalone?
I, this weekend, there's Mother's Coverit, which we're going to feed families through Rotary, so if you want to volunteer, let me know. If you want to just come by, that's free too. That's the only announcement I have.
I wanted to congratulate Paul Peretti, who is the new board, he's a great person, a very good board. We had a Veterans Advisory Board meeting this past week, and we are preparing for Veterans Day.
And in case you all forgot, please put it on your calendar, Veterans Day is November 11th, starts at 11:00 AM at the Veterans Memorial behind the police station. That's where we, uh, meet with a lot of veterans and we thank them for their service to our country every year, and well deserved. Also, we had the Open Space Advisory Committee meeting this past week, and I want to thank Neon and Vicky and the committee for their continuing efforts to... Leon and Vicki and the committee for their continuing efforts to keep Washington Township beautiful, try to keep it as best as we can as a farmland community amongst all the growing and development that is going on in our area and South Jersey. Lastly, it's with a sad heart that I say, God rest Charlie Kirk's soul. An American citizen, a family man, protected by the First Amendment, he was gunned down by a gutless coward. And that's all they are, gutless, when they take and try to take the life out of fellow Americans or anyone. This will not dampen the American spirit, but it will amplify the message. And I want that to be going out across the country. You're not going to stop us. Our forefathers would fight like hell at Constitutional Hall and argue over every point and have lunch together at the Philadelphia Tavern. Why can't we do that? Why can't we get along, have a good debate, discussion? Because we all learn from it. Now, I learned a lot from Paul tonight about the towing industry I never knew. We all learn from each other. The First Amendment is first because of a reason. They don't have it in Great Britain, in England. Comedians get locked up, put in jail for making fun of someone. They can't criticize their government. They can't criticize the king and queen. Well, we had a war back in 1776 and 77 and 78 and 79 and 80, which my great-grandfather fought in under George Washington. And I'll be damned if I'm going to give in to these cowards. I know no one up here will. So let's send a message. You're a gutless coward? Don't try us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Madam Clerk, anything?
Nothing to report, Mr. Council President. Thank you.
Get back.
Thank you, Council President. I want to reiterate what Joe said about Joe Burney from Greenwith Envy and Luke Stanch. They're two citizens that get back to town. They did a great job over at the high school. It was nice to be there to see our community help out each other. Rich Nardiello, who doesn't like any kind of gratitude, I know he left already, but he does a lot. We have a lot of good people in this town and it's great to be a part of it and see them. So I thank them for their efforts. Monday, me and Joe attended Dream Home Grand Opening. They opened in the old Solar Vision building on the Black Horse Pike. They do roofing and leaf construction as well. Really nice people. So if you get a chance, stop in. Tomorrow night, we have our 9/11 Memorial Walk at 6:30 at Washington Lake Park. If anybody's available, please attend. It's always a great night, well attended. This morning, we, we did our first podcast episode. So look, look for that. It was me, Councilman Harris and Council President DeBorrello. The name that was selected was beyond the, beyond the welcome sign, which was submitted by a resident named James. And we thought it was fitting that at all access points of our town, there's a welcome sign. And what happens behind that sign, a lot of people don't know. They don't know what happens when you come on this side of the dais or how things operate or why they operate or when they operate. So our goal is to make sure people understand as much as possible. We talk about transparency. Well, this is, this is transparency you're going to get. You're going to get everything from beginning to end. You understand why we make certain decisions and why we couldn't make certain decisions. So it was great to do the first episode. I'm excited to see what it looks like. And any residents have any suggestions of guests, ideas, suggestions? We're open for anything. So you could email any one of us and we'd love to have you a part of the show. And last, I want to mention about Charlie Kirk as well. It's sad that people have such hate to take a life of a father, son, a husband, and there's just no room for that in politics, in life, or in this world. And I just wish people would look themselves in the mirror and say, you know what? We can disagree. We can not like people, but it should never get to that point. So may he rest, him and his family, you know, get through this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council Vice President?
So again, congratulations to the members of the Police Department who were promoted tonight from experience. I know there's a lot of hours, time and dedication that it takes to reach and be recognized for that position. And once you get into the ranks, there is a lot of more time commitments and pressure put upon you. But it is all rewarding in the end and we made some great choices for those promotions tonight. Thank you to Chief Gersick for including us in tonight's promotion ceremonies and you have a great staff. The library, Sheila mentioned that they have Library Card Sign Up Month and they had another event. Functional Foods for Life Coffee Should It Be Your Mug of Choice? That's going to be September 24th at 6:30 p.m. at the library and they'll have samples of coffee for everybody to enjoy. I want to mention the Old Stone House this weekend. They have their yard sale. That's a great place to visit, a lot of township historical value there. I want to thank Public Works and the volunteers who take great pride in keeping up that facility. If you haven't had a chance to go over and meet with the staff who volunteer and do a lot of work on their own, please take the time to go visit them and learn about the history of Washington Township. The mayor mentioned 9/11 Walk tomorrow night. Fire Department and Police Department, they put a lot of time and effort into that. Really good event and help us to remember those that we lost on 9/11. And finally, just to echo the sentiments of the council tonight, our thoughts and prayers are for the family of not just Charlie Kirk, who was needlessly assassinated tonight. I look forward to watching his podcast and think that he was a great man and he showed a lot of restraint during a lot of his debates with people and he never got angry. He always tried to make his message known without violence. But also to the Ukraine victim who was needlessly murdered this week, thoughts and prayers for both their families and may the job that the law enforcement is doing to try to rid our country of these people who tend to harm us as American citizens and spread their hate continue and may we rid it from our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. So usually I always say this, but by the time it gets to me, we've heard a lot of the same things that I'm going to say again. But again, thank you so much to the chief and all those officers. Thank you to their families because they serve, but so do their families. So thank you to all of them as well. The podcast was a success today. We actually had a lot of fun with it. I would, I would say that we had some good laughs and there's really great information that we're hoping is going to get across to you because you see those things on social media, but tune in with the podcast, find out what's really happening. There won't be any, any politics on there. It'll be a lot of fun stuff. We hope to have veterans and seniors and kids on there, just really, really fun stuff. If you have a sports group and you're trying to raise money, let us know what's going on. We do have that 9/11 Walk tomorrow in the park. It is beautiful. Thank you so much to the Fire Department that puts that on. It's definitely a beautiful event. They had, at McGinnis tonight, they had the 9/11 where they put all the flags out, one for, for each, each victim of 9/11. There was a woman there that came up and her husband was in the first tower. You don't really know what to say to somebody like that, even 24 years later. There's not many words, but her strength, you could feel that coming from her. And she has a charity that we're going to get some more information about and she actually wants to come on the podcast and talk about that. So it's going to be really powerful. So we'll have guests like that that, that you can kind of hear. And kind of going back to what everybody else said, listen, political violence is becoming something that's, that's normal and we can't normalize that. We can't think that's okay. Bullets will not change, ballot boxes will. So we have to understand that no matter how we, we view each other, we can't let that political label D or R. Let's, let's, let's be V for, for volunteerism. Let's understand that we can have different views. That's the great thing about our country. That's why we are the greatest nation on earth, because we can have different views. We can look at each other and agree to disagree. That's okay. It's okay to see things differently, but let's not let it slip into that idea that it's okay, we normalize this idea that violence will solve anything because it never does. So with that being said, I'd like to take a moment of silence for, for Charlie Kirk and his family. Thank you. Moving on to public participation, can I get a motion to open the public?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak from the public? Leon?
Leon Lacritz, 88, Homburg Way, Sewell, Chairman of the Open Space Committee. This is, what I'm about to say is very appropriate because tonight you have on the agenda proposal of a adoption of a new tree ordinance. So what I have in front of me are numbers of how we have or we have not enforced and collected the monies of the current tree ordinance. So in 20, in 2020, we had a balance of $239,461. In that year, we collected a total of $59,000.
Leon. Leon. Could you talk into the mic?
Okay. Is that better? So in that year, we, in 2020, we collected from builders $59,000. Since then, we have not collected one penny. In the last five and a half years, we've spent $186,572 removing hazardous trees on township property and only spent approximately $13,000 to purchase new trees. And the Tree Fund actually is established not to, it's established to plant trees to compensate for the trees which are removed by developers. So in this township, we spent $181,000 to remove the trees using Tree Fund money and only used about $13,000 to plant trees. But that's not the point. The point is in the last five and a half years, we have spent an average of over $35,000 each year removing money for the Tree Fund. As of the end of June this year, we only have $44,000 left and since then it's even less, but I wasn't able to pull up the figures fast enough. The bottom line is that in over a year, the Tree Fund, if we don't collect anything, will be, there won't be any money in the Tree Fund. We'll still have to cut down trees and you're going to have to get the money from the general fund. So the bottom line is we should have to start collecting money. Now, I don't want to go into the particulars, but we've lost over $200,000 in not collecting money, way over $200,000. So the bottom line is the planning board and the zoning board and everybody else has got to do their job in enforcing the tree ordinance. And the new tree ordinance, when it's adopted, is stricter than what we have on the books now. Any questions? If so.
Any questions? Thank you, Leon.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Thank you, Leon.
Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will now go into executive session regarding litigation, Rising Sun versus Washington Township. It'll last about 30 minutes. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution R246-2025?
Right.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorrello?
Yes.
Okay, so action may be taken when we return from our executive session. Okay, so action may be taken when we return from our executive session.
Can I get a motion to return from executive session?
Motion.
Can I get a motion to return from executive session?
Motion, second.
Roll call please.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Passlone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President Deveraux?
Yes, the next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 24, 2025. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.